Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, May 13, at 7:04 PM. We're coming back from, we're reconvening from closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Vocal, please.
Councilmember, please.
Here.
Mayor Potem Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Mayor Sanz Inez.
Here. I just want to point out that our sound system is off today, so we have to speak a little bit louder. So if you happen to provide testimony or do public comments, please speak a little bit louder than usual, because the tape recorder is in this area, okay? All right. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Dunn, and the principal allegiance will be led by PJ Milana, our director of Parks and Recreation Department. So please stand.
Please bow your heads. Oh, Heavenly Father, thank you for all you do. Please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. Bless our residents in these times and help us take care of the less unfortunate. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions for the issues that come before us tonight. Let us make the best decisions for the betterment of our community. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. We ask for your protections and blessings on our military men and women, and may they always return safely to their families. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray, and thank you, PJ. I'll start off with city council announcements. The Carruthers Park Stormwater and Urban Runoff Capture Project has begun. This project will capture stormwater and urban runoff from both the Los Cervitas Channel and Lower San Gabriel River Watersheds to the diversion system. Construction is anticipated to be complete by 2020. These areas will capture all the runoff, the urban runoff, and it's going to be stored, treated, and the water is going to be used for irrigation purposes. For any questions regarding this project, you may contact the city's project manager, Bernie Inigas, at (562) 804-1424, extension 2233. In addition, I'd like to give a warm welcome to our new addition to our city staff, Jennifer Igersek is a management analyst from the city clerk's office. So Jennifer, congratulations, welcome. Mayor Potem Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 30th, six new Uber and Lyft rideshare pickup and drop-off signs were installed in downtown Bellflower as an effort to alleviate the growing difficulty of finding parking. Public valet service is also available in the city parking lot located east of Bellflower Boulevard between Oak Street and Belmont Street, next to the Town Center Plaza. Valet service is available on Friday and Saturday evenings from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Garza. Councilmember Ray Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. There has been, recently, been a widespread outbreak of the measles, including one case in Long Beach and seven cases in Los Angeles County. Measles is a highly contagious and potentially severe disease spread from person to person. Some symptoms may include fever, rash, cough, runny nose, and watery eyes, red watery eyes even. If you think you or someone, you know somebody that have the measles or has been exposed to the measles, contact your doctor's office by phone right away. For more information, visit the Public Health website at publichealth.la-county.gov. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are invited to come and join our Neighborhood Watch informational session this Wednesday, May 15th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM here at Bellflower City Hall. Come and learn about the Neighborhood Watch program and the benefits of participation in the program. There will be refreshments and a raffle prize. For more information or to RSVP, you can call Sacramento Ramos. You can find him at (562) 925-0124, extension 2530. Or you can email Sacramento at sramos@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city hall will be closed on Monday, May 27th, and that's due to the observance of Memorial Day. There will be no trash pickup or no street sweeping on Monday, so... But trash will be delayed just one day for the rest of the week, so... And this group will be back in action on Tuesday, May 28th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. This week, we're going to proclaim, this week, as National Public Works Week, and I'd like to invite Louis Igerball from our Public Works Department and my fellow council members to the riser to make a presentation.
We've done a proclamation for the city of Bellflower to proclaim National Public Works Week, and I just want to thank our staff from the Public Works Department, all those people who work in the public works arena within the county of LA and the state for all the work that they do, especially in the city of Bellflower. You can imagine how much work they do to improve our city, be it repeated removal of our streets, our parks, and all those maintenance of our different buildings, all the different facilities. They do a marvelous job. And sometimes we just notice about things not being done and we complain, but I would really appreciate if you could shout out to our staff whenever they do a great work. Please let them know that they're doing a wonderful job. So with that, I just want to make a portion of this proclamation to state that these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees of all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructures and facilities essential for our citizens. So now therefore, I, Sani Arzanta Inez, designate the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Signed, Mayor Sani Arzanta Inez, Mayor Potem Garza, Councilmember Ray Dunn, Councilmember Raymond, Uai Hamada, and Councilmember Dan Coops. So Louis, I want to present this proclamation on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And look forward to our celebration next week. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Glad you don't have a mic, huh?
Yeah. All right, moving along, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
All right, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council. A matter is not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the party. We recognize one mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching and pointing the agreement that you have picked or items. You will be given a reasonable amount of time to address the city council.
Okay, any public comments? Please come up.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Josh Norrie.
Good evening, Josh.
And I'm here on behalf of Clifton Brackenstake Library, 945 Flora Street. I'd like to invite all of the adults of the community to come to the library tomorrow to participate in our makromobile advanced OzoBots program on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Robotics is forever. Want to discover how fun it can be with our adorable little robots? You show them the way and watch them follow your instructions. I've actually programmed one of these OzoBots. They're a little micro robot that is programmed using color coding, so I think that it would be really interesting. This is an adult program, so all of the adults of the community are welcome. I hope to see a lot of people there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do you have any students in the audience? Any students? From what school?
Los Alamitos.
Los Alamitos, both of you?
Yeah.
All right, welcome. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a public hearing. It's consideration of possible action to introduce the public hearing to consider application for zone change and general plan amendment to adopt resolution 19-34, removing the general plan amendment case number GPA 18-02, to change A, the general plan land use designation from C commercial to L low density residential on a portion of lot properly located at 15553 Bellflower Boulevard, and B, the general plan land use designation from L to C on a portion of lot improperly located at 15554 Blaine Avenue, and three, read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance number 1576, an ordinance approving zone change case number ZZ 18-01, to change a portion of lot from G C general commercial zone to R1 low density residential zone, properly located at 15553 Bellflower Boulevard, and B, a portion of lot from R1 zone to CG zone, properly located at 1554 Blaine Avenue. I'd like to make a finding of order with a short title. Done.
All right, Ms. Corpus?
Catherine will be...
Oh, Catherine, all right, Catherine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members, members of the public. I have a short presentation for you regarding zone change case number ZZ 18-01 and general plan amendment case number GPA 18-02. Some background on this project. The project site consists of two parcels. Each contains a single family dwelling. Parcel one, shown here in yellow, is located at 15554 Blaine Avenue and is Zoned R1 Low Density Residential. Parcel two, shown in red and yellow, is located at 15553 Bellflower Boulevard. Parcel two is both a through lot, so it has street frontage on both Blaine Avenue and Bellflower Boulevard, and is also a flag-shaped lot. In addition, parcel two has mixed zoning. The majority of the property is Zoned General Commercial, but a small portion is Zoned R1 Low Density Residential. The lot line adjustment application was submitted to adjust the property line between the two parcels. The proposed lot line adjustment was to eliminate the flag lot and the through lot on parcel two, but would result in both parcels having mixed zoning. No changes in the lot sizes would result from the lot line adjustment, however. Due to the mixed zoning, the applicant was notified that a zone change and general plan amendment were required before the lot line adjustment could be approved. The lot line adjustment is a discretionary approval. It will be approved by the city engineer and is not up for review as part of this application. So the request from the applicants is shown here. This is the existing lot configurations, and the applicants are requesting to change a portion of the lot from R1 to CG zone and the general plan land use designation from L to C on property located at 15554 Blaine Avenue, as shown in yellow. And the other portion of the application is to change a portion of the lot from CG to R1 and the general plan land use designation from C to L on property located at 15553 Bellflower Boulevard. So this, let me see, let me do this. Sorry. So this is the existing configuration which I showed before. The changes being made are shown here, so this portion will be changed to general commercial and this portion here to low density residential. And this is the end configuration, or once the zone change, general plan amendment are approved, and the lot line adjustment is also approved. There are also, I want to mention, no proposed site improvements as part of this application. And all the required findings for the zone change have been met as outlined in resolution number 19-34. So the staff recommends to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 19-34, and read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number 1376, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We have the applicants, Mr. Christopher Cooney's, property owner for 15553 Bellflower Boulevard, as well as Ms. Carol Boyd and Mr. Richard Chimamoto of 15554 Blaine Avenue. In the audience, also available to answer any questions you may have.
Good.
One final thing, for the record, a slight correction was made to the maps of both exhibit As to accurately represent a boundary change for the zone change and general plan land use designation. A copy of the revised exhibit As is on the diat.
Yes. Yeah, we got that. Okay, good. I'm glad the applicants are here. Can you go back to the last, the last, that one? I'm just kind of curious, since they're realigning the boundaries, why was this not squared off? I'm just kind of curious. Why was it left?
Yes, that is because the lot sizes needed to remain unchanged.
So they could not take something here?
Could not because the, let's see if we can see a better...
The house, the setback.
Yeah, the setback requirement is 15 feet.
Oh, I see.
With the proposal, they're at the 15 feet exactly, and originally, of course, they did want to square it off.
Oh, okay.
But they needed to keep the lot sizes the same.
I thought it was the tree. There's a tree here. I thought they were trying to avoid that.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Only because, again, we do need to have a 15-foot rear...
So it's the setback?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, thank you. Any question for Catherine?
I have a question.
Yes.
So again, on this illustration, this will become commercial, this will become residential, correct?
Yes, so this is existing commercial, so this is the only portion here that's going to be changing, this dark red, because otherwise with the lot line adjustment, this would have been R1, so they would have had commercial and then also R1 on the same parcel. It's probably easier to see it this way. So this portion would have been mixed zoning, and this portion here would have been mixed zoning for this property as well. So this is to eliminate that mixed zoning on both of the parcels.
Now, the ordinance requires that when you have a commercial property next to a residential one, you have a block wall, and that's already in place there dividing those properties?
There is not an existing block wall there right now.
You mentioned there weren't going to be any structural changes.
That's correct.
So there's not going to be a necessity for a block wall dividing the commercial from the residential?
They may propose one later, but at this time, there was not even block wall proposed.
What he's asking is if an improvement will trigger it, correct?
It's not a requirement of ours. I'm sure the applicant would want to in order to better utilize their properties, but...
I thought it was a requirement, because when you have a service station next to a residential, you didn't want the light shining through the house.
Right, but in this case, it's an existing non-conforming general commercial...
All right, so it's...
Zone property, but with a single...
So the ordinance doesn't apply?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Or may not conform.
That's all I have.
Okay, another question?
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Mayor Potem Garza to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. I'd like to invite the applicants. I'd like to invite the applicants. There you go. I have some curious questions.
Okay.
Okay, just for, can you show the previous slide? I'm just curious about this.
Which one here, or...?
Which one?
Which parcel does he represent?
I don't know.
I think they're both representing...
I should have asked Councilmember Coops, because he knows the history of all the lots here, but I missed that point.
Yeah, that's in 1899, whatever the block wall is. Did you see that thing?
I'm curious, what was the purpose of this tiny sliver here?
It was like that when I bought the lot about a year and a half ago.
So you bought this?
I bought the right one.
Oh, the right one? Ah, okay.
I own the flag lot.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering if that was because of, I'm kind of guessing that this was one property before and then this was later on sold as a parcel?
That's what we suspect.
And they kept this as a horse trail, or they kept the horse to Blaine?
To answer your question, many times they have a cattle.
Oh, there you go. Now you're coming, yeah.
There was, there was a structure on the long lot, but there was a wall...
Where it...
Right, right there, yeah.
Right there.
There actually is a wall, currently, right there. But to the left of that, there was a storage structure that the person on Bellflower's side wanted, still wanted access to.
Hmm, okay.
With the vehicle access.
So you own this?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So that's why that was still, that's why he wanted still access from the Blaine side, so it could...
The driveway.
I see, driveway, I see.
The structure.
Okay.
The structure isn't there anymore. It was just a storage shed that was taken down years ago.
I see, okay. Oh, I was remiss. Can you sign in? We just need your name for the minutes of the meeting. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Because I was very curious about what happened. Any question of the applicants?
Well, this looks like, again, old Bellflower, just brought back up here recently and taken care of. I did see Mr. Chimamoto get up and kind of go way back here. This is like a high school thing. I know he, but he was an upperclassman when I was a freshman, so... But I think, I don't know if Dan will vouch, but I think the Chimamoto family ran the Greater Central Mercer, part of that.
Well, correct.
Yeah. Oh, I think...
Well, it was Mr. Hadas, Hadas and Mr. Maury.
The Hadas, yeah.
And then you had, that's where Ray operates from, now the Greater Central Mercer.
There you go.
But yeah, I just see it as a cleanup, and I, you know, it's something that just came up, and glad we're kind of straightening things out and hopefully down the road. I mean, you know, again, not telling the owner of parcel two, but that's going to be commercial, so... So it's, again, you can worry about it down, again, about the limitations on expansions, things like that.
Does nobody else want to testify, any testimony here in the public? Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Council Mayor Potem Garza to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order.
Sounds like we've got two property owners willing and we've got a city hall willing.
That's very useful, very useful.
That's uncommon.
And I'm glad that you're able to work together on this issue. Very good. All right, is there a motion to move forward?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make a motion to... Let me find my place here. Find my other place. Okay. I'd like to adopt resolution 19-34, a resolution approving the general plan, case GP 18-02, general plan land use, designated commercial to low density residential on a portion of the lot located at 1553 Bellflower Boulevard, and a general plan land designation from L to C on a portion of lot on property at 1554 Blaine Avenue. Wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1376.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Hamada to adopt resolution 19-34 and introduce ordinance 1376. Vocal, please.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, item 12A. Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to introduce an ordinance number 1377, an ordinance amending section 1.08.010 in various sections of chapter 1.12 of the Bellflower Municipal Code to establish fine amounts for violations of the city's Building and Safety Codes pursuant to Government Code, section 36902, adopt resolution 19-35, a resolution adopting a fine measure pursuant to Government Code, section 1.12.060.
Mr. Berger, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe most of this is outlined in the written staff report. This ordinance and resolution does several things. First, the ordinance would increase the fine amounts for building and safety violations from current $100, $200, $500 range to $130, $250, $1,000, and then $2,500, depending on how grievous the violations were and how long they were implemented. That is the first thing it does. The second thing it does is add in a hardship provision, so if persons who are issued an administrative citation are unable to pay those fines, there is a provision in the ordinance that would allow them to protest the fines and appeal the fine amounts. The third thing the ordinance does is repeal a section of the current code which speaks to what happens if you issue an administrative citation. Right now, the way it reads is, if you issue an administrative citation, the violation is not treated as a misdemeanor. What that translates into is that we can't charge more than the maximum amounts currently in the government code with regard to fines. If that provision is repealed, we can potentially issue administrative citations for higher fine amounts. So I know that one of the items that's coming up is, for example, for fireworks on July 4th, where the cities frequently like to charge at least $1,000 for violations of fireworks regulations. That's certainly something that the city council can do. Those fine amounts are reflected in the accompanying resolution, and if the council wishes to increase that amount up to $1,000, it certainly can. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think it's fairly straightforward, but again, I'm happy to answer.
Let me just clarify, on the hardship case, on the first offense, there's no hardship?
Correct.
They have to pay the first one?
Correct.
They can appeal for the second and the third?
Correct.
Okay, so no matter what, the first one, they need, they must pay?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any question?
Yeah, you said we can re-raise the fireworks, right, the fine?
Yes, sir.
To $1,000 and be legal?
Yes, as soon as the effective date occurs for the actual ordinance, which would repeal that one section of the code that's recommended, then you would be able to charge a higher amount for the fine amounts with regard to those types of high-risk regulations. As I said, the resolution is currently written for the first amount to be $250, but you can certainly raise that to $1,000 if you wish.
Starting then, and you can do the same with the solid waste collection?
The solid waste is more problematic, and the reason for that is twofold. One is that there is no immediate health and safety concern that I can point to to convince a court to enforce that particular fine.
Get by a car?
Sorry?
Get by a car's health and safety. You get in a trash container on the street at night?
I don't think I'm going to convince a court. Here's the second reason, which is there is a provision in the law talking about the equity of the fines, and there has to be, really, to put it simply, a reasonable relationship between the fine and the violation that you're trying to punish versus what the particular violation is. So just based upon experience, I can tell you that I don't think that any court would uphold a $1,000 fine violation for a first-time offender, for example, for a first-time offense. It's just that that type of fine is either going to be reduced or...
This is like a high school thing. I know he... But he was an upperclassman when I was a freshman, so... But I think, I don't know if Dan will vouch, but I think the Shimamoto family ran the Greater Central Mercer, part of that.
Well, correct.
Yeah. Oh, I think...
Well, it was Mr. Hodas and Mr. Mori.
The hottest, yeah.
And then you had... That's where Ray operates from, now the Greater Central Mercer.
There you go.
But yeah, I just see this as a cleanup and, you know, it's something that just came up and glad we're kind of straightening things out and hopefully down the road. I mean, you know, again, not telling the owner of a parcel too, but that's going to be commercial, so... Again, you can worry about it down, again, about the limitations on expansions, things like that.
Does nobody else want to testify, any testimony here in the public? Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Council... Mayor Protem Garza to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order.
Sounds like we've got two property owners willing and we've got a city hall willing.
That's very useful, very useful.
That's uncommon.
And I'm glad that you're able to work together on this issue. Very good. All right, is there a motion to move forward?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to... Let me find my place here. What's wrong with each? Find my other place. Okay. I'd like to adopt Resolution 19-34, a resolution approving the general plan, in Phase GP 18-02, general plan land use, a designated commercial to low-density residential on a portion of the lot located at 1553 of Bellflower Boulevard, and a general plan land designation from the LTC of the portion lawn on the property at 1554 Blaine Avenue. Way further reading and introduce ordinance number 1376.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Hamada to adopt Resolution 1934 and introduce ordinance 1376. Vocal, please.
Councilmember Coop?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Sankey?
Aye.
Next item, item 12A. Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration of possible action to introduce ordinance number 1377, an ordinance amending section 1.08.010 in various sections of chapter 1.12 of the Bellflower Municipal Code to establish fine amounts for violations of the city's building and safety codes pursuant to government code, section 36902, adopt Resolution 19-35, a resolution adopting a fine schedule pursuant to municipal code section 1.12.060.
Mr. Berger, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe most of this is outlined in the written staff report. This ordinance and resolution does several things. First, the ordinance would increase the fine amounts for building and safety violations from current $100, $200, $500 range to $130, $250, $1,000, and then $2,500, depending on how grievous the violations were and how long they were implemented. That is the first thing it does. The second thing it does is add in a hardship provision, so if persons who are issued an administrative citation are unable to pay those fines, there is a provision in the ordinance that would allow them to protest and fines and appeal the fine amounts. The third thing the ordinance does is repeal a section of the current code which speaks to what happens if you issue an administrative citation. Right now, the way it reads is, if you issue an administrative citation, the violation is not treated as a misdemeanor. What that translates into is that we can't charge more than the maximum amounts currently in the government code with regard to fines. If that provision is repealed, we can potentially issue administrative citations for higher fine amounts. So I know that one of the items that's coming up is, for example, for fireworks on July 4th, where the cities frequently like to charge at least $1,000 for violations of fireworks regulations. That's certainly something that the city council can do. Those fine amounts are reflected in the accompanying resolution, and if the council wishes to increase that amount up to $1,000, it certainly can. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think it's fairly straightforward, but again, I'm happy to answer.
Let me just clarify, on the hardship case, on the first offense, there's no hardship?
Correct.
They have to pay the first one?
Correct.
They can appeal for the second and the third?
Correct.
Okay, so no matter what, the first one, they need, they must pay?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any question?
Yeah, you said we can raise the fireworks, right, the fine?
Yes, sir.
To $1,000 and be legal?
Yes, as soon as the effective date occurs for the actual ordinance, which would repeal that one section of the code that's recommended, then you would be able to charge a higher amount for the fine amounts with regard to those types of high-risk regulations. As I said, the resolution is currently written for the first amount to be $250, but you can certainly raise that to $1,000 if you wish.
Starting then, and you can do the same with the solid waste collection?
The solid waste is more problematic, and the reason for that is twofold. One is that there is no immediate health and safety concern that I can point to to convince a court to enforce that particular fine amount.
Get by a car?
Sorry?
Get by a car is health and safety. You get in a trash container on the street at night?
I don't think I'm going to convince a court. Here's the second reason, which is there is a provision in the law talking about the equity of the fines, and there has to be, really, to put it simply, a reasonable relationship between the fine and the violation that you're trying to punish versus what the particular violation is. So just based upon experience, I can tell you that I don't think that any court would uphold a $1,000 fine violation for a first-time offender, for example, for a first-time offense. It's just that that type of fine is either going to be reduced or thrown out. I'm not going to be able to legally deny that. So I recommend against that one, but I'm certainly happy to defend the $1,000 fine for fireworks violations.
Or more.
Or more.
Or more.
Because potentially you can burn down a neighborhood with illegal fireworks.
Right.
I'm very comfortable defending that type of fine amount.
Okay, good.
We got that clear.
Any other question, Mr. Berger? Okay, any comments from the public? It's clear? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
Let's talk about what do we think the firework fine should be. I think it should be higher than $1,000.
But that's something we need to bring back.
Nope.
Can we do it tonight?
Do it tonight. I think Lakewood's $2,000. The two? Yeah. $2,500?
I have two spheres.
How many calls do you guys get about the city getting a war zone all 4th of July? It's a rough week for all of us.
Right, I know.
For telling us what it is and you can't do nothing about it.
But the major factor is, I think another factor is the availability of sheriff deputies.
Boy, I have it. Easier to pay for sheriff deputies. The whole idea was that what we did about 10 years ago, we did the $1,000 fine 10 years ago. Something like that. To collect money to put more deputies on patrol. $1,000 isn't what it used to be 10 years ago.
And we haven't raised that since.
It shouldn't be... Illegal fireworks and... You guys know what I'm talking about.
I know, we know, we know.
There's a latent smoke, nothing you can do about it, but you might as well make an example out of something. But I'll do, I'll go with whatever you want. I just, now I know, everybody knows how I feel.
Any input, Ray?
Raymond?
Raymond, Raymond.
No, I think we should stay pace with the other city. If someone else is out there who's really watching it, is getting to, I think it'll definitely raise some eyebrows, but, and hopefully stop a lot of that, yes. There are some, a lot of areas that sound like major war zone.
Mayor Protem Garza?
I'm fine with two.
I'm okay with two. Let's try two, and then if it's not as effective as we thought, then we can always increase it next year.
How about Coop?
Well, you said already, you're okay with two.
What about Coop?
Didn't you say two?
I did say two.
Yeah, you said two.
But I wanted...
Okay, okay.
Wait a minute, I've got another concern.
All right.
And can we have Joel come?
Sure, Joel.
Now, Joel, I know that, correct me if I'm wrong, it's often difficult to get the personnel you need for that 4th of July night. Is that not true?
Correct. Very difficult, cities are all looking for people the same time.
Would it be possible to use our private patrol for this?
We wouldn't be giving them authorization to make citations, to give citations...
Okay, I'm just asking, because I know how you struggle to get enough people on the street to be able to write any amount that we decide.
My public safety?
Yeah.
Code enforcement, yeah?
We could, we could write on public safety and code, but it's a security thing. We'd have to, you know, have enough backup, because that gets pretty angry out there sometimes. Some of them have been on ride alongs.
Yeah, well, we've seen it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen it.
They get a little more bold and they see it's not a sheriff's deputy that's ruining their party.
On a ideal situation, how many sheriff's deputies do you have on the street that night?
Over the years, it's changed. There are as many as a dozen extra just doing that type of thing. More recently, it's been less than that, closer to eight, I'd say.
What do you anticipate this year?
Oh, geez, I don't know, Lieutenant, it's kind of a crapshoot. Somewhere in the range, I guess.
Somewhere between eight and 12, eight and 10?
I would say eight would be a pretty good year for us if we could pull it off.
If we can get eight, we'd really be styling.
I think so. It's, I wish we could do three times that amount. We could keep many busy as we're out there.
Do they rent two to a car?
Normally, two to a car, because again, it's a little safety issue.
Kevin's probably busy with non-sform, wonder a car with a non-sform?
Ah, ew. I mean, push a come a shove, maybe, but again, they're used to working with each other, keeping each other's back and knowing each other's tactics, you know, all of a sudden you flip with a stranger who's not stranger, but strange to enforcement, that would be a little precarious.
Can you see a scenario, let's say, combination of code enforcement and private security?
Boy, you guys are really fantastic.
Well, I mean, I'm just...
What are you doing, what experiment?
Why not? I mean...
Highlight project, do I hear highlight project?
How do you see that? Can you see that possibility?
I could imagine it. I mean, it's almost going to be a liability issue that we'd have to go through our city HR and so forth, is how much risk we want to take.
Tim says no.
No? No, okay. Do I hear a no? Okay, not a good idea. So I guess your task is to get more deputies?
Yes.
There you go.
Do we need, now, is there a certain amount we pay that is standard throughout the industry? Where I'm going with this, if we go, I'll go $2,500, like Ray said, if it's going to get me more people on the street.
Yeah, it wouldn't matter a bit what the fine is as far as getting more people on the street, because it's not a piecework job.
Well, I want to make sure that we cover our expenses.
Yeah, they get paid the straight hourly rate.
All right, I thought there was overtime, overtime and a half.
I mean, overtime rate.
Yeah, we pay overtime per deputy.
But it's the availability, though, it's not the money, it's the availability.
$1,000 was plenty for, well, I should, it has nothing to do with the people that get there. It was enough to really ruin people's evening, I'll tell you that.
Well, sometimes more than once.
Oh, yeah.
In the same evening.
But I just wanted to bring out some of the concerns that you've shared with me about getting the personnel. We're all going to, we can anticipate what's going to happen 4th of July, we do every year.
True.
And it does look like a war zone when you see all the smoke and...
Every year, in all the cities around.
And it all contributes to itself, and I was just trying to figure out, I am certainly agree with $2,000, but it's a matter of whether or not we can have the personnel out there monitoring it.
I was under the impression that Lakewood had $1,000 plus extra money, potentially that the fire marshal might bill the city to get rid of fireworks. Sorry?
They advertise two.
They advertise two on those... Leaderboards.
Yeah, I talked to one of them, and he said it was more like, kind of what I was describing.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, looking at the code, we currently have a provision to recover code enforcement fees in section 8.36.230. So you can collect the fine as well as the fees from...
So $2,000 plus fees?
Plus fees.
That would be the fee of the deputy?
It just says code enforcement costs.
So it's the deputy, the deputy?
Under code enforcement?
The cost of deputies.
So...
Enforcement of the code?
Yeah.
My recommendation would be, in preparation for July 4th, to come back at a future agenda meeting and establish what those fees are, figure out what fully allocated hourly rate is going to be, and then come up with the fees that would be charged on top of the fines.
But we can adopt the resolution tonight, the ordinance tonight, with $2,000 plus the fees, code enforcement fees?
Well, the fees are already built into the code, so...
Okay, okay.
The only real question would be how much for specifically enforcing July 4th regulations are those fees going to be? And under those circumstances, my recommendation would be to have the council list fee schedule, which shows the fully allocated hourly rate of the deputies, depending on rank, because those will be different, and if we have any non-sform personnel involved with it too. So anybody that was issued a citation would have to pay the fine, but they'd also have to pay the enforcement costs associated with enforcing that particular citation.
Something to think about.
I think, I think it can come close to $2,500. Okay, so you're okay with $2,000 for now?
Yeah, okay, can I move on to my other thing? Let's make a deal here. The trash diggers that steal the trash from our garbage cans and recyclables and all that.
Dumpster digging, dumpster diving.
Is what you're comfortable with, or can we go, can we nudge that up, Mr. Attorney?
Honestly, I think $2.50 is pushing it.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Anything else? Did you want to increase? Since we're going through this.
So if that's the will of the council, then my recommendation would be to make those changes on the resolution, which is the last page of this particular agenda item, and see in section B of the attachment, this is attachment A, fine schedule for administrative citations ordinance, and subsection B, we would change the draft amount for chapter 8.16 violations from $250 to $2,000. And then in subsection C2, see right now, it says not to exceed $1,000. Based upon that change to the fine schedule for chapter 8.16, that would outline the change therefore not to exceed $6,000.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And it will cover the cost of code enforcement later on?
We'll put it on to a future agenda for consideration.
So that we can advertise that well before the 4th of July?
Right.
And unless, D and E are pretty self-planatory, because they're Vs. V's got to be justified.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then. I'd like to introduce number 137, ordinance 1377, an ordinance amending section 1.08.010 for various sections of chapter 1.12, the Bellflower Municipal Code to establish fine amounts for violations and the Bellflower Safety Codes as amended. And then adopt Resolution 1935, a resolution adopting a fine schedule pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code 1.12.060. And way further reading and introduce ordinance number 1377.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilmember Dunn and second by Councilmember Hamada to introduce ordinance 1377 and adopt Resolution 19-35. Vocal, please.
Councilmember Coop?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Sankey?
Aye.
There are no consideration items for this evening, and moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Just a minor for 14B and...
Minor discussion, or?
Yeah, just for discussion.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I think just a typo. And then 14D, just writing for the public's knowledge.
So 14B and...
And 14D.
D, okay. Anyone else? Dan?
No.
Okay, all right, let's talk about 14B first.
14, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, I think there's reference to Artesia and then Alondra, kind of mixed them up there. So it's, yeah, it's just, I think that's...
Oh, I see, I see.
Just to make sure you that, correct that for any record, unless both schools, both streets were affected by just, in the title, just Artesia. But that's the same number, so that's what kind of threw out the flag.
Did you get that?
Just a typo.
Just typos.
Just typos.
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah, good.
Okay, good.
And 14D, again, maybe just briefly, just for the public's knowledge, again, there's this partnership between Bellflower and Paramount to, you know, to work out this plan and, you know, just some of the, you know, some of the major benefits. Just something to highlight for the public.
Yeah, so the ATP is a joint effort between both the city of Paramount as well as the city of Bellflower. We were able to obtain a small grant, the ATP together for both the cities. It made sense for us. We shared several arterial streets as well as the bike trail that dissects right through the middle of both of our towns. So it made sense for us to do it. It was an easy grant for us to get ahold of. So the whole point of the ATP plan is it is a document with several recommendations, pedestrian recommendations, bicycle recommendations, and it helps us as we move forward in the world of obtaining grants. It's a tool that we use that shows that we have a complete streets program here in the city. The ATP was kind of the last little cog in our complete streets portfolio that we needed to have, and we're able to complete it well with this plan here. But ultimately, what it does is it simply just lays out a groundwork and a working map for us to kind of work off of as we kind of work through different street projects. We get down, you know, in the future, when we start looking at doing bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements, and we incorporate the recommendations that we think fit best into our projects, and we incorporate them into the future street and pedestrian and bike projects that we'll be doing here in the city. Having the ATP is extremely helpful to us, because as I've mentioned a couple of different times about it, it literally puts you in like the number one group pile, you know, so when you write grants and the agency has solicited grants from different local cities or organizations, they will sit and read through the grants and they grade them, there's a grade sheet, they assign them point values and all that. Right off the bat, if you have the ATP, you get to go in the number one group. If you don't have the ATP and you don't have a complete streets program in place, you end up over on the side. And they'll give you all the money, those groups first, and then if there's anything left over, then we'll start working off the other pile. So it made sense for us to do it. We had an active partner next door, we share a lot of the same infrastructure facilities as it relates to streets and roadways, and it was an easy grab for us.
Good, good. There was a picture of Lakewood Boulevard, there was a gentleman walking on the sidewalk, very narrow sidewalk, and he's walking, again, it looks like northbound, and he's approaching a telephone pole, I mean, a pole, a power pole, which is right in the center of the, maybe three-foot wide, so those kind of things over time will get addressed and...
Yes, yeah, so those issues are very problematic for the Boulevard. We inherited those issues from the state when they relinquished Lakewood Boulevard to us. We invested a pretty good chunk of money this past year to deal with the AVA curb ramps on Lakewood Boulevard. We did 22 on Lakewood Boulevard just this past year. We have some more and some more sidewalk improvements. The right-of-way issue or the issue that you see in that image with the telephone pole, I think we all know how undergrounding utilities goes around here. It's not necessarily in our cards, but as we develop the Lakewood corridor project, we will look at probably bringing the sidewalks out a little further, basically making them wider to 10-foot sidewalks to give us that right-of-way to get around those impediments that we cannot do anything about. We can't take, we can't go behind the poles because of the private property, so the only option is to bump it out a little bit, which works on Lakewood because the lanes are...
Wide.
Pretty wide.
24 feet.
All right, thank you, Lynn, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Lynn, another question. Again, thank you so much for putting together that plan, together with your staff and our consultant. Now, given this plan, do you have any kind of grants that are in the horizon that we can apply for that will come out of this, using this ATP?
Yeah, so I think some of the more grants that are coming up this year, I think this is another cycle, the HSIP grants, the Highway Safety Improvement Project, the CAC, the 91605 405 CAC, just for the call out for everyone's top priority projects. One of the components that they were asking about for the gateway cog was, do you have an ATP? So we were able to check yes on that box. So there's a new wave of funding that's going to be coming down through the cog here, I think, in the latter half of this year, another funding cycle through the 91605. So those off the top of my head are two that we have here coming up here in the next six months.
Okay, good. So is there something in the horizon?
Oh, yes, yeah, there's always something. In, you know, the HSIP grant that we got for Bellflower Boulevard south of Artesia just a few months ago, we just put in for that. And we didn't have an ATP at the time, but we definitely noted the improvements with one of the main poles for pedestrian and bicycles as well as roadway improvements, and it worked out for us. So there's always money out there you have to go for, but this helps us out.
So you can match that grant with other matches to do the improvements that we do it on? You can match the HSIP grant with other grants?
Yeah, well, other funding sources, Measure R, Measure M, SB1, those dollars will be used to match the difference of that project.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Senate.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada to approve the consent calendar. Without objection, that will be the order. Council comments. Councilmember Coops.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I want to adjourn this meeting this evening in honor of a friend of mine, Daniel Shepherd. Dan was born February 27, 1941, in Los Angeles, passed away May 6, 2019, at the age of 78. In 1965, Dan was drafted into the military and served in the Army stationed in Germany for two years. Fun is arrival back in the States. He worked with North American Rockwell and Downey where he met and later married his wife Christina Shepherd. Dan graduated from Stratus College in 1975, went on to have a career in real estate and property management as a real estate broker with his main office here located in Bellflower. That's called Safe Card Equities, and it's located right across the street from what we know Noah's Car Wash. Dan was widowed in 1987 and lovingly raised his children Erickson and Cynthia Shepherd. And in 1990, he met Pauline Ead and they married in 2010. They shared many travels and ventures together. Dan was active in the community and was a supporter of the symphony, the valet, the Boy Scouts of America, and many other charitable causes. Dan survived by his wife Pauline Ead Shepherd, three children and their spouses, Carl Ead, Erickson, and married to Jennifer Cynthia, married to James, and four grandsons and brother and sister-in-law Larry Shepherd and Larry's wife Cheryl. The celebration of Dan's life is scheduled for 1:30 p.m. Thursday, May 16, in 2019, Forest Lawn Church of Our Fathers located on 4471 Lincoln Avenue in Cypress, Forest Lawn Cemetery, for the reception to follow afterwards at his home. In lieu of flowers, please send donations to the Boy Scouts of America or the American Cancer Society. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go to the entire Shepherd family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Amir Pratim Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some things to share. On May 2 here at City Hall, staff and I had a meeting with Metro regarding the upcoming West End and a Branch Metroreal Project. We had an update regarding the traffic analysis that's being conducted. Really good meeting, and I know we have some follow-ups on that. And then on May 6, Mr. Del Longa and I attended a metro transit-oriented development strategic implementation plan, which is essentially how to implement transit-oriented communities along this rail project that's coming through Bellflower in the next two or three years here. And that took a lot of efforts. I want to thank our planning staff and Mr. Del Longa for all the work on that. We have an upcoming meeting. I know Mr. Stewart, myself, and I believe our mayor may be joining us to Metro meeting on the 20th that's going to take place at Metro to have further discussions on some elements of this project that are going to be affecting our city. Related to that, Mr. Dutton was able to successfully had me added to an ad hoc committee for the council of government here locally that is going to discuss this metro right-of-way and the rail project. It was a really select group that was selected for this, and so Mr. Dunn successfully was able to add me onto this group. I think I'm the only non-cog member that's on it, aside from the city managers. So I wanted to thank Mr. Dutton for adding me to this ad hoc and...
Anytime you want more work on, I'm there for you.
Yeah, I will let you know.
You were the man for the job.
And I understand it got a little contentious there, so...
It was fun.
Yeah, it was fun. On May 9, we had the Carruthers Park Stormwater Project groundbreaking ceremony. I want to thank staff and I want to thank my colleagues for that nice event. I know that the local residents are going to be enduring some construction activity for the next year and a half, but I know that the end product is going to be something worth waiting for. Two more things. This coming Saturday during the Conference for Contract Cities, the Contract Cities Association, that'll be my last meeting as the legislative committee chair. We're going to have a new president for that association, and that new president gets to select new chairmanships and directors for their board. I was asked to stay on there, but because of my increasing duties with the League of California Cities, I have a little bit too much on my plate. So I respectfully decline, and I'm still going to be involved with them. And then lastly, related to that, oh, by the way, in terms of that, Bellflower was really, they're really happy with us and the support of Contract Cities. We came up with some really innovative ideas, including Contract Cities having its first annual Legislative Action Day at the local, at the county level, which actually got some really good results for us. Lastly, I just wanted to share with everyone, SB 50, it's a state bill. I think the city has an opposed position to that officially, which is great. I wanted to bring that up because everybody should be aware of this bill. There's a lot of bills out there the legislature is considering. They have, I think they had over 2,800 bills that were introduced this session. And while there's a lot of them that are of high interest and would affect our city, SB 50 would dramatically change our city. The biggest thing is it would allow for up to four units, meaning a quadruplex in single-family residential areas. And we as a city would not have any say in that at all. That would be Sacramento allowing for that. And I'm not just talking single-family residential, I'm talking about our twos, our threes, any area of the city that the state deems would be able to sustain housing, somebody by right would be able to get that done, and we, again, as a city, would not have any role in that, in approving that or saying no or modifying anything. So if you, I would encourage, if you care about your quality of life, I would absolutely recommend reaching out to your legislators. And if you're from Bellflower, that would be Christina Garcia in the Assembly, and it would be Barbara Archilev in the Senate, and let them know that you oppose this bill. Because I, if you've not seen it already, if you look in the newspapers, even this weekend, most major newspapers already have stories running on this one bill. So again, just a caution to you, the other thing I want to mention regarding SB 50 is that, and I want to measure my words here, but the hypocrisy in Sacramento when it comes to legislation, the author of this bill claims that we as a state need to share in the burden of increasing the housing stock in our state. But then a week and a half ago, he cut a deal with another senator up there, and he carved out a whole bunch of rich counties up in Northern California that don't want this. And so now, if this thing passes into law, they would be exempted. And again, that's a hypocrisy in this whole system. And what they don't get to do, with the housing that those counties would not have to build, we in Southern California would have to make up for that, for that density. So again, just SB 50, please keep an eye out for that. And that completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Amir Pratim Garza. Councilmember Dunn.
Well, since nobody can hear us on TV land at all, so I want to apologize for no audio. But when this goes out, because there are going to be a video feed with no sound, can we have some text below, sorry for audio, so everybody knows on those calls that there's no audio on the cable feed?
Councilmember Dunn, I've heard that, I clicked on the microphone.
You're used to it.
I've heard from staff that the video will be married with our audio recording to hopefully get some things that will function.
Kind of. You know, it'll be a rocky marriage.
It'll feel like a 1955 movie where the words don't match up.
The lips are going to be different than the sound.
Be insane.
I'm glad to hear we got some audio kind of maybe happening. So with that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the Stormy Weather Bank's, again, clothing store on, again, right on the Boulevard. Some of her specialties is like prom dresses, but she's working on her men's line, so hopefully, and she brings exciting product, and, you know, check it out. On May 2, I had the honor to participate in the National Day of Prayer here in town. Again, another awesome event, and it's just so great to see something like this happening in our town, and we had a good turnout, and the mayor was with me. And so, did a lot of praying, so we're again looking out for this town. On May 3, I had the honor to participate in the Teacher Appreciation Event at the French Quarter, so got to attend that. Thank you, guys.
You were the right guy for that.
I was somewhere else.
It only took an hour and 15 minutes to start, but there were some teachers, there were some teachers to, again, acknowledge for their service to kids. So again, anytime to appreciate a teacher, you know, take that time, please. And the next day, I went to the WRD Groundwater Festival, a great event, well-turned, very good turnout. It was packed, and there was presence from a number of cities and did have a chance to, our state senator was there, so let's sit down with Bob, and just enjoy the day. And again, there's some great information that comes out of that organization, and you can check what's the real gold down in this earth below us, so that. And then again, I had the honor to participate in the Stormwater Capture Event in Carruthers with my colleagues. And then on the 10th, again, the mayor was present also at the Southern California Edison Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month event here at the main event. Nice turnout. Did get to meet our area rep, and I think that area rep needs to show his face around here. So Francisco, if you're listening.
Francisco.
Yeah, you gotta come by. Look forward to seeing you here. So and then lastly, this morning, I had the honor to, with the mayor again, to participate in the Seraptas Making Dreams Come True Awards Lunch. Extend appreciations to the two bats, to me, the city clerk and the deputy city clerk. Had a nice table, and we got to sit on the nicer one.
What?
It has a really nice plate, but we didn't want to get them dirty. But no, it was an awesome event. Young ladies got some scholarships, and, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to mentor young ladies out there, and their, you know, lives are changed and so on, so just another awesome event for this community. Thank you to the Seraptas International of Bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. And I just have a few items to report on. As Councilmember Hamada mentioned, Stormy Weather Design was open on the 25th, but also with Councilmember Dunne, we're there. And on April 30, I was invited by the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce to give them an update on the, what's going on in the city of Bellflower, and that was a good turnout, and I'm glad that they were really excited in terms of what's going on in the city. The National Day of Prayer also, I want to piggyback on what Councilmember Hamada mentioned. I also want to thank the Bellflower Municipal Association for hosting this event. It's just awesome to be able to pray publicly as a community. That's something that we should be very proud of. And that same afternoon, I attended the grand opening of Fire Pizza, which is located on Los Angeles Avenue just west of Clark Avenue, Los Angeles Street just west of Clark Avenue. And on May 3, so I missed the Teacher Appreciation, I was at another event. I was at the Student Art Competition Celebration sponsored by Congresswoman Lucille Roybel Allard, and I want to give a shout out to Karina Lozano of Bellflower High School, who was one of the finalists in this competition. There were six finalists, and she did a marvelous job in her art. And on May 4, it's Saturday, we, together with staff, I hosted the Walk with the Mayor along the Bellflower Walk and Bike Trail. The trail was spotless. It was nice, and we had a good turnout, about 60 people joined us. So again, thanks to Parks and Rec staff and Public Works staff, and also we had one escort public safety vehicle keeping an eye on us. And also, I want to add something on the water we captured, photo opportunity we had last May 9. I thank Caltrans for funding this project. This is a very expensive project that would cost up to $30 million. So we're glad that Caltrans is footing the bill for this project. And also, again, on the 10th, the Southern California Edison hosted the American Asian and Pacific Islanders Heritage Celebration. What I want to tell you here is this, it's so nice to hear good compliments from other city officials. They really impressed with the quality of the main event center, and I was really glad that the sound system was working perfectly that morning. So thanks again to Public Works staff for fixing the sound system, and it's just kind of very different when we get a lot of kudos from other council members from other cities. And again, also, Seraptas, thank you so much for your, for what you do in our community, especially helping the women in our community advance in their careers. And on a sad note, I also would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Virginia Lee Cook. Virginia Lee Cook was born on September 15, 1927, in Senet, Missouri, and passed away on May 3 at the age of 91. Virginia married Charles Ivan Cook on December 11, 1943, in Paragold, Arkansas. The couple moved to California from Arkansas in 1956. Virginia was a successful businesswoman. Charles and Virginia owned and operated Curtis Service, a wholesale sandwich business, as well as multiple Taco Bell franchise locations in Southern California. Virginia also served as Director of Bellflower Public Facilities Corporation from 1999 to 2005. Her son, Rick Cook, also served as Director of the same corporation from 2012 to 2015. Virginia was also a member of the Calvary Baptist Church in Bellflower. She served as a sixth-grade Sunday school teacher, Bible study leader, and mentor to many young women. Virginia and Charles were married for 73 years at his passing in 2017. She survived, her three children and their spouses. Kenneth Cook married to Margie, Rick Cook married to Uraine, Diane married to Jim Mitchell, eight grandchildren, five great-grandchildren, and sisters Wanda Hanson, Jean Massey, and Marion Smithy. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go to, go out to the entire Cook family. So with that, we're adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of Virginia Lee Cook and Daniel N. Shepherd to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 28, 2019. Just a reminder, Monday is a holiday, so we're meeting the next day, Tuesday, May 28. With that, this meeting is adjourned.